Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would like to ask all in council chambers to turn off or at least set their phones to vibrate. Today is September 4th, and the public hearing of the Stratford zoning Board of Appeals will come to order to hear those petitions advertised for this session. For those of you not familiar with our process, each petitioner or their designated representative will present their case to the board. When they have concluded, board members will then have an opportunity to ask questions they may have. I will then ask if there is anyone who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the petition. We ask that all petitioners speak clearly and directly into the microphone. After all petitions have been heard, we will then recess to our administrative session. Interested parties are welcome to stay, however, only board members and staff will be allowed to speak at that time. Please be advised that clapping and or shouting as a way of expressing opinions on applications is not allowed or tolerated. Let the hearing begin. Mr. Dempsey, would you be so kind to read item number one?
Does that stay on, or do I have to push it again? Okay. Petition number one, petition of Joseph E. Jarre seeking waivers of 3.11 to construct a two-story, two-car garage in an RS1 zone. Hardship: Lot was created in 1930, locations and the dimensions of a lot preclude meeting and current zoning regulations.
Good evening, members of the board. I am Joseph Jarre. I live at 16 Oak Road. I have been for 32 years. Is this fine? Can you hear me well? First, I'd like to submit my certificates of mailing to my neighbors. Thank you. Members, I'm here to request the variance for section 3.11, setback in height regulations to construct a two-car garage in an RS1 district. As stated in the summary of the hardship, the property was created in the 30s, locations and dimensions preclude meeting current zoning regulations, which is contributing to an unnecessary hardship. Additionally, further rezoning in 1994 made it even more difficult when they re-zoned to RS1. At that time, I had no input on that meeting that was held. I was away on business for Sikorsky Aircraft in Asia for six months. As per the administrator, excuse me, furthermore, I request an additional hardship exists because sanitary sewers are not available in my area, and I am required to meet the state's current H-20 septic system regulations. As per the administrator's letter to me, he states that the proposed garage is not typical to an RS1 zone. However, my neighbor of One Spruce Lane has a garage that mirrors my proposal. These dimensions of his garage are 24 by 28, which is a typical-sized garage, but mine is going to be two feet longer, 24 by 30. I also acknowledge the concerns of the administrator, and I would like to reassure the board that my proposed two-car garage will not be used as a dwelling or an in-law apartment, and there will be no type of auto repair business licensed or otherwise. As stated, I'm an auto enthusiast who enjoys mechanical work on his vehicles as a pastime. To continue this pastime in my retirement, to improve the property by providing reasonable and adequate storage, equipment, and parking space, I would require this garage to house vehicles and provide a lift capable of providing the proper ground clearance for a standard-sized pickup truck. This would allow me to better continue my hobby in a safer, more adequate environment instead of outside on a concrete slab, which I've been doing so for 20 years and haven't been happy about. Also, in regards to the administrator's recommendation to relocate the garage, this would encroach upon a property that has been previously approved as a building lot, and I have a copy of that here for the board. Granting of the variances will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other property owners or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. That granting my petition would improve the property by making it safer and provide reasonable and adequate storage space, parking, and mechanical equipment. Furthermore, where my property is and in my neighborhood, the lots are not cookie-cutter square like they would be, let's say, in the Paradise Green area. We're very spread out, and my building this garage would not encroach on anybody else in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Would any board members like to pose any questions to the applicant? Ms. Young?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just so I can understand better what I heard you describe about your exploration of alternate locations for the proposal per the administrator's comments.
Yes.
The survey we have shows lots 201, 202, and Lot C, which I guess is 203, maybe?
201 and 202, excuse me, 201 and 204 make up A.
Thank you.
202 and 203 make up B, and where the garage is going to be located would be in C.
And the documentation you handed in this evening, I think it was 1987 approval for a division of your property?
Well, actually, we're not doing a subdivision. We're including multiple lots to make a building lot.
That was a consolidation, then?
Yes.
So, I'm trying to reconcile what I heard you say of why the administrator's suggested alternative of using the northwest section is unrealistic, in your opinion, or undesirable?
It's undesirable, ma'am, because I would be losing what value there is of that building lot for a garage, and I don't think anyone would want to sacrifice a proposal that they want to develop the land in place of just putting garage on it. I plan to develop A and B.
So, are the land records, do they currently show three different lots, A, B, and C, or is that something you're looking to execute in the future, and you're trying to preserve your right to do that going forward?
Well, when I was approved for the building lots, that's what we did. We made A, B, and C. A was one building lot, which was 201, 204. B was another building lot, 202 and 203.
So, I'm just trying to, again, understand, is it even an option for you to have a detached garage on a standalone lot? As I'm understanding, the administrator's recommendation pushed it to the northwest?
Yes, and that would encroach upon one of those, either of those, building lots.
I think I want to put my same question to the administrator to make sure I'm interpreting his memo correctly.
Sure.
Mr. Urbanski, when you refer to the applicant considering utilizing the northwest section of the property, were you suggesting the Lot A area? And if that is a separate lot, could he have a standalone accessory building on it?
Yeah, and my suggestion was to either Lot A or Lot B, because they all look like they, although they're separate lots, they're all within one property, they're all within one property, according to the map that we've got here. So, building an accessory structure would be an accessory use to the principal use, which is the single-family dwelling, all contained within one lot. But I understand what the applicant is, I think the applicant is saying it takes away some of his flexibility in the future to develop those lots.
I think I understand you both, but just from my own understanding, currently, today as we sit here, this is a single lot, A, B, and C?
That's according to the survey that we are looking at in the application, yes.
Which is why you're saying?
One parcel of land with multiple lots in it.
One parcel of land with multiple lots in it. So, do the zoning regulations allow detached accessory structures on a separate lot, on a single parcel?
Yes.
Okay, so feasible, yes, desirable, potentially, no, from the applicant's perspective, but feasible from your perspective?
Yes.
My question's been asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Do any other commissioners? Mr. Dempsey?
You just wanted to go with the garage, so you could put your car or your truck in there. There must be antiques or something.
The garage is going to be, the second floor is going to be non-heated storage. For myself, made probably like many others, it seems like you never have enough storage space. For the height being where it is, I require the height so I can put in a lift on the first floor so it'll be compatible with my pickup truck, so I have the height so I can work underneath it. I'd also like to say that I'm not an auto mechanic, okay? That's not my profession. I have, you know, mechanical abilities, and what I do is I do preventative maintenance and modifications, okay? I do not do automotive repairs. I have a mechanic in Milford that does automotive repairs, okay? So, I just do modifications to my own vehicles, not to anyone else's.
Like brake jobs, oil changes, stuff like that?
I don't do brake jobs, but I do oil changes. I'll do change spark plugs, air filters, things of this nature.
Minor stuff.
I have a 2000, excuse me?
Minor stuff.
Minor stuff, except I do go a little bit major, and I have a 2008 Mustang Bullitt that I put a supercharger on, a saline supercharger. So, you know, that, you know, inquires, that's a little bit of a major modification.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoydick?
Yes, I just have a question that Jay brought up also, on the present leaching field that you have there, and I guess you're going to have a proposed other leaching field?
I want to, you know, beg your pardon for the busyness of this map, but because of where the garage is going to be and the septic system and the requirements for the state, we had to include as much information as we can. What we're going to do, because we don't know what is underneath for the leaching field, we are going to replace the septic system that meets H-20 wheel-loading specifications so we can use that part of Hemlock Trail to access the garage.
Okay, thank you.
And I've worked, I've worked extremely close with Andrew from the Health Department for a couple of weeks on this project also, so he's well aware of what is going on here.
Thank you, Mr. Hoydick. Any other questions from the board? Ms. Young?
I forgot to ask, have you consulted your neighbors, or as you look around, are they with us this evening, in which case I'll hear from them directly?
I have consulted with my adjoining property owners, who don't have any problems at all with me doing what I want to do, and I have two neighbors, one next door and one next door to him, that would like to say something to my behalf.
Thank you.
Okay, one last call. Any other questions from the board? There being none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
I would like to now invite anyone in attendance who would like to speak in favor
Good evening. My name's Robert Shapiro. I live on One Spruce Lane, okay? I've been a friend and a neighbor of Joe's for like 30 years, okay? And he's about the best neighbor you could have. He got the idea from the garage. When I moved into the neighborhood, I built a garage, 24 by 28, with a loft up top, and all I've ever heard for 30 years is how great it is, all right, and how much he wanted to do it. Okay, but then the zoning changed and this and that, and for years, I've been seeing him on the ground. He has his car wrapped in a tarp, okay, and it's very difficult for him to work on that, okay? So, I see no problem with him building a garage in the back of his house there. He's got plenty of room, and to encroach on another lot doesn't make any sense to me, okay? Because nobody here would put a garage on a $100,000 lot, okay, a $30,000 garage, okay? Because nobody wants to lose that type of money, and he's not in any business or anything. He's retired, and he wants to fool around in his garage, have something nice so he can work on his cars and stuff like, well, he only has one car and a truck. But I don't see any problem with him. Matter of fact, okay, he really enjoy it, all right, and he's not bothering anybody. I've been in that neighborhood a long time, like I said. Everybody there gets along fine, and there's people here, okay, that have no problem having Joe have a garage, okay? So, I think it's a good idea for him to get it passed, all right? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in attendance who would be, like to speak in favor of this petition?
Good evening. My name's John Soboloski. I'm Joe's next-door neighbor. I have no problems at all with him constructing a garage. I've lived there since '01. I've been a Stratford resident since '78. Joe and I are veterans, and it would make sense for him to build it there and then take up on his other piece of property, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, which address is yours?
I beg your pardon?
What address are you at?
Two Oak Road.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone in attendance that would like to oppose this petition? Seeing none, I will take, entertain a motion to close. Mr. Hoydick, seconded by Mr. Dempsey, all in favor? Aye. That's closed. Mr. Hoydick, will you be so kind to read our second petition?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item two, 350 Whipperwill Lane, petition of Shayna Wolf seeking waivers of 3.3, 3.31, excluding 3.31.2, 3.31.9, 3.31.10, and 3.31.11 to construct a single-family dwelling in an RS1 zone. The hardship is being a pre-existing, non-conforming, irregular-shaped property.
That was a mouthful, Mr. Hoydick. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Madam Secretary, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Nicholas Owen. I reside at four Whipperwill Lane here in Stratford, and I maintain a business office which is located at 932 East Broadway in Stratford. We are here this evening based on the petition that's just read to the record, 350 Whipperwill Lane, the petition of Ms. Shayna Wolf, and she is here this evening. If you'd raise your hand so the board can see you. Thank you. And Mr. Brian Hirsch, her husband, he is the gentleman that does most of the work on this property when work needs to be done. As part of your application process, we are required to send out certificates of mailing, and I would like to submit those into the record at this point to assure the board that all of the appropriate notices were given to, you're welcome, to all the surrounding property owners and those affected directly across the street from this project. What I'd like to do this evening is I'd like to call a number of witnesses, and I think the first witness that I want to call is Mr. Mike Wilson, and I will do that shortly. This petition is a petition that is very different and very unique from other petitions that this board hears and grants or denies. There have been many issues with this petition, and I'm going to articulate a few for this board so the commission has a understanding. Now, I noticed that Mr. Hoydick, I know Mr. Hoydick, not only does he sit on this Board of Zoning Appeals, he also sits on the Wetlands Commission, and this particular piece of property was subject to a cease and desist order because the upland review area under the wetlands regulation was clear-cut. There were no actual wetlands disturbed. What was disturbed in full was the upland review area. It was cited, a cease and desist was issued. Mr. Hirsch, on his own, tried to put the petition together in order to meet with the Wetlands Commission and get approval, and quite frankly, he couldn't do it. He came knocking on my door, and I live down the street from where this lot is, and he was of the understanding that I might be able to help him, and quite frankly, I'm glad I was able to help him. That Wetlands Commission and that approval, you'll probably hear from the opposition tonight, not to belabor it, and I bring it up so the board takes judicial notice that Wetlands approval was approved for this particular property. The petition itself was approved. A permit has not been pulled yet. The bond has not been posted yet. The final configuration and numbers put together for that bond have not been completely calculated yet. Now, the opposition can stand here and tell you, well, you've had almost a year to do it. That's true, but it doesn't negate the Wetlands permit, and nowhere in any of the documentation that this board has seen through the zoning administrator or the zoning administrator office suggests that this property does not have Wetlands approval. Now, I bring that up knowing because the opposition is going to bring it up, and they're going to rant and rave, why isn't it done? Why isn't it done? That permission to build a house or grant a waiver, if it's granted, should not happen until that restoration is completely done. There's a problem. The problem with that is one of the severe stipulations that the Wetlands Commission insisted be attached to the approval was that there was a four-year looksee period. In other words, Mr. Hirsch, Ms. Wolf had to plant the Wetlands plant, they had to be established for a period of four years before a building permit could be granted to build a house. I hope you understood what I just said. So, if the board approves this petition, and I hope they do, because I think it's warranted based on a number of hardships which are going to be presented to the board this evening, they still have a four-year period to wait and a sign-off from the Wetlands Commission on the building permit in order to construct the house that they want to construct. So, what we are attempting to do is move along with this process. The first step in this process was to garner approval from the Wetlands Commission. We did. The second step in this process is to garner approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that's why we're here this evening, based on the hardships that are going to be presented. If this board approves this petition, and I hope they do, there is a third step I have to do. Since this parcel is part of a larger 10-acre piece, back in the day, in the 1800s, we have to go before the planning board for re-subdivision. So, we're not done. We're not even a third way through this process. If you approve this this evening, we will be two-thirds through this process. There is no illusion in my mind that the opposition will get up and hammer away at the fact that they did not get the permit, they did not start the restoration, and therefore they're not entitled to the approval from the Board of Appeals, and to me, in my opinion, and based on attorneys that I have spoken to, and I'm not an attorney. It's nonsense. The opposition would like to see the wetlands restored before anything else is done. That is not helpful. That doesn't move the project along. That doesn't get the financing and the money in order to complete this project and get it done in a timely manner. Now, you can say, well, they had a year to get the permit and post the bond. That doesn't mean they have to start right away. At this point with the approval, it doesn't mean they have to start right away. At some point, they have to start, once that bond is posted and once the permit is issued. And just once again, and I belabor that point, they have Wetlands approval, you will see it in your documentation. What I would like to do at this point is I would like to call before the commission Mr. Mike Wilson, who has a great deal of knowledge and history to this property, and Mr. Wilson, would you please come up to the microphone and introduce yourself? And I'm going to ask Mr. Wilson a number of questions, and hopefully, he will answer them.
Excuse me, Mr. Wilson, before you begin, if we can keep the topic to the ZBA application, I understand there's a Wetlands history, but I'd like to focus on what you're requesting tonight.
Mr. Wilson, I have met with you on several occasions, and at least one of those occasions, I indicated to you that if you, this would be helpful to this petition, if you can give me a history of this property and how you have been involved in this property, who the prior owner was, what relationship was to you, and how this particular parcel that was sold by you to Mr. Hirsch and Ms. Wolf came into existence?
Sure.
Would you please explain to the commission?
Mr. Wilson, before you begin answering that, if you can just state your address for the record?
Sure, my name is Mike Wilson. My address is 6 Surrey Drive in Shelton, Connecticut.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, I'm a Wilson. The Wilsons have been on that road and those three houses there since the road, Whipperwill was a dirt road, and the golf course was cow pasture. The original owner of all the 10 to 12 acres, whatever it was at the time, was my great-grandmother called Anna B. Wilson. Anna B. Wilson sold a parcel to my uncle up on top of the hill, which is now a big house, that was Bernard and Gert Wilson. Anna B. Wilson also sold a parcel to my father, to my father's dad, which was Ralph Wilson. So, now, there's three parcels on that land, but all on separate deeds. So, I mean, there's, yeah, there's, so, there's my grandmother, there's three parcels, my grandmother, my father, and my uncle. So, time goes by, my uncle dies, and so, me and my wife wanted to buy the property. So, you know, we inquired from my aunt, Trudy Ann Kelly was her name, that's my, that was Gertrude Wilson's daughter, who owned the house up on the hill, and she passed and left it to her daughter, which decided to sell it. So, along with that little cape on top of the hill, which was my uncle's house, was also another piece of property which we used to keep the horses in, and that was about 1.1, 1.31 acre, something like that, and it was just to keep the horses.
All right, hold your thought. I want to ask you a couple of questions now. The house that currently, it's working? I've got a big mouth, I don't need it anyway. The house that currently sits on top of the hill, that house was not always there, can you tell us how that house was developed into a major house or a mini mansion, and if that has access, legal access, to the right-of-way from Whipperwill Lane?
Oh, yes. Now, that was one of the original, there was, it was called a rural route, and the number of the rural route of all three houses was number 82. That was the, that was one mailbox for all houses, so my uncle's house, that little cape, that was always there from when my grandmother, in the very beginning, I guess that cape was built, I think, I remember seeing on a deed in 1950-something, 1940-something, I think it was, that's when my uncle and aunt built their house.
1940-something, I think it was. That's when my uncle and aunt built their house on the hill up there. So...
All right, stop. At some point in time, you purchased that property.
Yes.
You renovated the existing house and added a number of additions
Yes.
to make that house currently the size that it is.
Yes.
And ultimately sold it to a third party.
Yes.
With access from Whipper Will Lane through that right-of-way.
Yes, and it --
Stop. In your memory, do you recall what they called that right-of-way? You mentioned it at one of our meetings in the office. You had a name for it. Wood Road?
Oh, it was Wood Road, yeah.
It was called Wood Road.
Yeah. That was the original, original, yeah.
The original road. Now, for the Commission's benefit, Wood Road was the name that the people on Whipper Will Lane gave to that street. In checking with the assessor's office and with the town engineer, there is no record of a wood road, and the reason why there isn't is because it was a pasture road, a right-of-way. And so they gave it a name just to know where the location was. For people who were coming there, for people who were doing business with the Wilsons and so forth, that was the name given to that right-of-way. That right-of-way currently exists pretty much the same as it did back in the 1800s, except for the fact there are some portions that are paved, there are some portions that are dirt. I don't know if any of you have been up there, but it's about a 20 to a 25-foot right-of-way, and I will get into some of the comments from the engineering department and other departments a little bit further on in my presentation. Now, Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry.
If I could ask a question at this point in time?
Maybe we should just wait until, do you want to write it down, or do you think --
Well, my question would be, would be helpful as you're doing this back-and-forth exercise, if you could remind us why these facts matter, if you put it in context, then I could better follow the train of thought.
Would you like me to do that now, or would you like me to --
While you're doing it, it would be helpful so I can understand. Thank you.
Mary, that's a good point. The reason why we are going through this is to prove to the Commission that this piece, this parcel, this entire 12 acres, was not a creation of anybody's, any figment of anybody's imagination. It's a piece of ground, a large piece of ground, that was used entirely as a farm back in the day. Pigs, yes.
Yes.
Horses, chickens, cows, pasture, tree cutting, all of that back in the day. So these different parcels lead to the fact that we now have a lot, a lot, in question that at least is suitable, in our opinion, because it is a little bit better than one acre to build a one-acre home in a one-acre neighborhood. Now, with the exception of this house right here, if I can get this thing to work. No, I can't get it to work right now. There's, Mike, if you would, there's a little red house on Whipper Will Lane itself. It looks like --
That's 300. That's my father's house.
That's the original house on the Wilson property?
No, that's not the original house. The original house is the brown house next door.
All right. Now, right --
Richard Signalism.
Next to the brown house, there's a driveway, and that's the entrance to the --
This is the common driveway that goes all the way to the house on the hill.
And that's a right-of-way used in common by everyone?
Always has been.
Including your neighbor who owns that house right here?
Yes. From when this was a dirt road, that was always, always a right-of-way.
All right. Now, this is just another picture of that driveway, that right-of-way, up through the property. The blue house that I was talking about with Mr. Wilson is this picture up in the upper-left-hand corner. You can see that it's a major house. It is about 4,000, 4,000 to 4,300 square feet, that I would guess, and this is built on one of the parcels up there. This map that you see right here, and what I am pointing to now, because this thing is refusing to work all the way, this is the right-of-way down to Whipper Will Lane for the entire parcel.
Right here.
To right here.
Like this.
Right. Okay. This is another view of that right-of-way. Now, at some point in time, Mr. Wilson, you met Mr. Hirsch, and you sold him that lot, knowing that that lot was not zoned as a building lot as of yet or may never be. It may never be.
I thought it was at one point.
Okay. I'm going to get into that during some of my other arguments. So, other than that, that has been your total involvement in it?
Yes.
You've had some involvement with Mr. Lawrenson along the way, and that involvement was based on a representation by the tax assessor at one point in time, and I have correspondence from her. Thank you. Unless the Commission has any further, any questions of Mr. Wilson? No? Thank you, Mr. Wilson. The tax assessor at one point, was Ms. Melinda Fonda, had assessed this parcel, this lot, as a building lot, even though it never went before a planning board, a zoning board, or a Board of Zoning Appeals. At some point in time, Gary Lawrenson, the then-zoning administrator, took a look at it and said, "This is not zoned as a building lot." However, you have recorded a map on the land records, and I am going to put a notation on the land records that this is a lot and not a legal building lot as of yet. If you want to make it a building lot legalized, you need to go before the Boards and Commissions and get the appropriate and proper approvals to do so. But as of right now, it's not. So I indicated to you before Mr. Wilson stepped up that this is a journey, a three-step journey. And part of that journey, when we did Wetlands, and I'm not going to belabor the Wetlands because this is not the Wetlands Commission, this is the Board of Zoning Appeals. We've already been through the Wetlands Commission. But part of that was garnering a permit to build a septic system because there are no sewers in this area of town. This is septic system country, and I have a letter from the Health Department that this is, this lot is fully approved for a septic system, and it's from Maureen Whalen, and I'd like to enter this into the record as an exhibit. Further, one of the packages that Mr. Hibansky asks for ends up going to the engineering department, Town of Stratford. They did receive it, and I have remarks from Mr. Casey. I don't know if you want me to read them into the record, Mr. Chairman, I can, and then I can submit the document. However, I will tell you that any comments or recommendations or concerns that Mr. Casey has, they will be adhered to and can be made as a stipulation to the approval if you approve this as a building lot. At your discretion, sir.
I think it would be fine not to read them into the record and just, you're --
I will just briefly indicate to you, and then I'll submit this four-page document into the record. Mr. Casey had some concerns about the drainage, the drainage from Whipper Will Lane, and this right-of-way over the years, because there is no drainage on the entire right-of-way, and it's intermittently asphalt, gravel, stone, it washes, and sometimes it washes down to Whipper Will Lane. Now, it's really and truly a town responsibility to fix this. But since there was a petition before the Board of Zoning Appeals, this is an easy way for the Town of Stratford not to do the work that they are required to do and put it on the back of the developer or the builder. Although it is partly the right-of-ways issue, it's also a town issue because there are no drainage catch basins when they redid Whipper Will Lane about 10 years ago. Again, as I previously stated, these are not severe conditions. These are conditions to correct a problem and to stop any future problems, any water inundation running off that right-of-way. And I'd like to introduce this into the record. As part of that, I also have a drainage study prepared for Ms. Shayna Wolf from Caprius, Indiana, engineers and surveyors on this property, and I'd like to enter, I'd like to enter that into the record also.
Mr. Owen, may I ask you a question? I know normally, wait, you mentioned that it would be the town's responsibility to take care of the right-of-way. Who owns the right-of-way?
No, no, not to take care of the right-of-way, to take care of any water runoff on Whipper Will Lane.
Okay, thank you.
Not the right-of-way.
Thank you.
It is the owner's responsibility to take care of that.
I understand.
I'm sorry if I misspoke. As further assurance that the Wetlands has been approved on May 17, 2017, I would like to enter into the record a packet of the Wetlands approval and the conditions set forth, as I briefly described to you, as way of the bond and way of the stipulations and the time involved and the time limits and constraints that are a part of that approval. What I would like to do at this point, I indicated to you that the Health Department has approved the septic system. The Wetlands permit, the Wetlands application has been approved, although the permit is not in our hand as of yet. It doesn't negate the approval. The lot in question, as indicated by Mr. Wilson in his testimony, is part of a larger piece that was 12 some-odd acres. The unique thing about this particular piece, which is a hardship, is that all it has, all it has is a right-of-way from Whipper Will Lane. And that right-of-way is, as of record, recorded on the land records in the Town of Stratford and all affected homeowners. That homeowner on 410 Whipper Will, the homeowner up in the back with the blue house, I just don't remember the address of the blue house off the top of my head, Mr. Hirsch's piece has deeded rights-of-way to the parcel. So, there is no question that there is access to this piece. What's interesting, and in my research, I did not find but one other parcel of land, not exactly the same situation, but similar in nature, and it happened to be right on Whipper Will Lane, just down the hill a little bit from this project. And what that is, is a piece that the Planning Commission approved several years ago with the similar situation where there was a right-of-way developed into a rear portion of the property in order to build an additional house. Now, I will tell you, there were no homes on Whipper Will Lane at the time. These are all new homes on Whipper Will Lane. So the situation was a little bit different. So this has been done before. It doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to approve it, but what I'm trying to point out that this is a unique situation where there are very few pieces of this nature in town, and these are the only two that I've been able to come up with. Now, I have added colored pictures to each side of that right-of-way to indicate that there are newer houses built on these, and you can see by this, and I'd like to enter this thing as an exhibit at some point in time, but not, not at this moment, because I may use it again. The, this was a piece of, this particular piece was part of an old farm, the old Lovell Farm, where he had horses and cows and pigs and chickens and groceries and shrubbery and all kinds of things. So this has been done before on old farm pieces of land. In trying to formulate this application, I sat with Mr. Hibansky, and the only thing that we could come up with was the rear lot regulation. And when you look at it, when Mr. Hoydic read it into the record, we are asking, it seems like we're asking an awful lot of waivers for this piece of property. And yes, that is true, but there's no other regulation under the zoning regulations to come in with this piece on. But for the fact, and Mr. Hibansky will back me up on this, because he has said it to me more than once, but for the fact that this is a rear lot, but for the fact that this doesn't have frontage on Whipper Will Lane, I wouldn't have to be in front of this Commission. Because we have a one-acre lot plus in a one-acre zone that meets all of the requirements of a one-acre zone. Side yard, setback, rear yard, the whole enchilada. The house is going to be completely built out of the upland Wetlands review area. It will not encroach with it one bit. It does not encroach with the Wetlands itself. It never did, and that was not part of the initial permit. Some people say this is a self-created hardship because you own and bought a lot that was not an approved building lot. Well, the hardship doesn't go with the landowner. The hardship goes with the land. And if you take a look at the configuration, if you take a look at the configuration of this property, it certainly is a hardship. You have a right-of-way between two houses on Whipper Will Lane. You go up a long right-of-way to a vacant lot, which is the subject of this hearing tonight, and you have a lot on top of the hill, which also is serviced by that right-of-way. If I don't know, if this isn't a hardship, I don't know what is. Under the hardship statutes and under some memorandum of decisions, it basically says, "In order for a board to grant a variance under Section 8-63 in parentheses of the General Statutes, two conditions must be met." These are important. "The variance must be shown not to substantially affect the comprehensive zone plan." Well, the comprehensive zone plan for this entire area in the north end is one acre, minimum one acre. We have a minimum of one acre. So it conforms with the comprehensive plan of development under Connecticut General Statutes, and the variance can be granted based on Section 8-6 in parentheses 3. Secondly, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning ordinance must be shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to carrying out of the general purpose of the zoning plan. That simply means, if we are looking for something other than what's generally accepted in that area or in that zone, and it is substantially different, and by substantially different, I'm talking severe. We don't have one acre, we got three-quarters. We don't have one acre, we got a half. We don't have one acre, we got a quarter. But in this situation, we have everything we need for a one-acre lot, with the exception of street frontage, and basically, that's why we are here. Proof of the existence of an unusual hardship is also a condition precedent to granting of the variance. This, there certainly is proof that this is a hardship based on that right-of-way and the only access in and out of that. Now, there have been court decisions based on all of this, and I'm going to read them briefly into the record. Gorilla versus Zoning Board of Appeals, Super 368. Whittaker versus Zoning Board of Appeals, 179 Connecticut, 650, 655. Smith versus Zoning Board of Appeals, 174 Connecticut, 332. In these cases and many other cases, it was decided that a variance should be granted based on the unusual conditions of the property, based on the unusual hardship, and based on the fact that generally speaking, they all fit into the general overall comprehensive plan of development. And by way of, by way of another example, and I can defer to the 50-by-100 lot situations in the Town of Stratford, and this is a perfect example. Back in the day, there was no zoning for 50-by-100 lots. Back in the day, there was no zoning for this parcel. When the zoning was enacted in 1927 and ultimately adopted for this town and many other towns, they set rules and regulations which prohibited you from walking into a building department and pulling a building permit unless you went to a Board of Zoning Appeals or a zoning commission. And that was based on the new rules and regulations. Prior to 1927, you, I, anybody can walk in with a 50-by-100 lot and say, "I want a building permit," as long as I complied with the setback, side yard, rear yard, overall square footage, they would give you that building permit without a hearing. Once they changed the zoning, everything required a hearing, and it's no different from this piece. If it were back in the day, they could spin off that acre-plus lot and build a house, whether it was on a right-of-way or not on a right-of-way, approved or unimproved. There are other cases, Nash versus Board of Zoning Appeals, Connecticut, 165, 576, 577. Spencer versus Zoning Board of Appeals, 15 Connecticut, Appellate 387, 389. "The hardship which justifies a variance must be one that originates in the zoning ordinance itself." And this does. "And arises directly out of the application of the ordinance to circumstances or conditions beyond control of the party involved." Very important. "Beyond control of the party involved." He didn't create the right-of-way. The right-of-way was created there back in the 1800s. What we are looking for is use of that right-of-way in order to build a single-family home. "Where the effect of applying the strict zoning regulations to the subject property is so severe as to amount to practical confiscation, that is sufficient hardship to allow the even-required Zoning Board of Appeals to grant a variance." And there are numerous cases, and I'm just going to, I'll briefly go through them, and I know you hate hearing this, but I need to protect this record in case there's an appeal, if it's approved or denied. Smith versus Board of Zoning Appeals, Super 328. Chevron Oil Company versus Board of Zoning Appeals, 170 Connecticut. Stanowski versus Board of Zoning Appeals, 15 Connecticut. Lesserin Zoning Board of Appeals, 151 Connecticut, 165, and I can go on and on. And the reason why I state that, I'll state this again, is where the effect of applying the zoning regulations, in other words, where you deny this strictly under zoning regulations and don't or will not grant a variance to this property, you are, I don't mean you individually, the courts find that you are practically confiscating the property without compensation. the courts find that you are practically confiscating the property without compensation. And that all goes to a certain set of standards. What can you use this property for if you don't build a single-family house? I guess you can plant grass. I guess you can plant shrubs. You can plant trees. You can do anything. However, it's not the full use and benefit as designed under the zoning regulations in a one-acre zone for a one-acre lot. Practical confiscation, as I indicated, occurs when an ordinance so limits the use of the land that it cannot be utilized for any permitted purpose without a variance. That's the situation here. We can't use this property for what it is zoned for because of the impact it has on the, because of the right-of-way and the fact that we don't have the street frontage, and we cannot comply in full with your rear lot regulations, which really was the only regulation that we can come in under. Whether, also it's been found that whether a zoning regulation is unreasonable and confiscatory as to a piece of property depends on the facts and circumstances of each case. And I submit to you that this is a classic hardship, not based on who likes it, who doesn't like it, not based on my big mouth shooting off at the zoning board, but based on the testimony and the exhibits and the information given to you under the law. This is a clear hardship under the law. The development, and then I'm going to call my architect to go through some things with you which are important. The development of this property would have no measurable effect on any existing homes in the area because everything that surrounds it, with the exception of this home on Whipper Will Lane on a smaller lot, this home on Whipper Will Lane with a smaller lot, and there was one other, there are three on Whipper Will Lane with undersides lots which were part of the old farm, the farmland that Mr. Wilson indicated to you in his testimony, will not create any problems for anyone. There'll be a house on a one-acre lot, a beautiful home, probably worth $5,000 to $550,000. There'll be no traffic problems. We haven't heard from the police department. There are no traffic problems. We have in fact heard from the fire department at about quarter after four, 4:30 today, and he indicated that he has no issues bringing in his fire apparatus because he has to go to the top of the hill where that blue house is located anyway. Any improvement on the right-of-way would be an improvement for him, but he does, he's not opposed to this particular piece of development, and Mr. Habanski can opine to that statement if he'd like, or the commission can believe me. With that, I'm going to turn this over to my architect and engineer and have him go through the steps that he's taken in order to have this property developed properly and appropriately. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Washington Cabezas of Cabezas De Angelis Engineers and Surveyors, 78 Elm Street, Bridgeport. Our challenge here was to show the single-family residents on this lot in such a way so that a driveway could comfortably fit on the property and a vehicle can access the garage very easily. So, that's why you see the proposed residence kind of like turned in such a way that it's kind of topped on the map. Also, the soils were a little challenging, but we did get the, a septic system to work by, by the health code so that it meets the health, the current health code, and there's also a code-compliant area. So, here on the, on the easterly side is the primary system, and right next to it is the code-compliant system or the reserve, and that meets the health code. 50 feet away to the, to the west is a 20-unit drainage system that'll take half the roof area, proposed roof area in the front of the house. That also works at a 10 and 25-year storm event, and the peak flow rates and the site storm runoff were decreased in both events. Also, these are both on the opposite end of the wetlands so that we're nowhere near the wetlands, and also we have a proposed well since there's no water service or sewer services in this area. That's pretty much the gist of it. It's a three-bedroom house that's proposed, therefore we need a 1,000-gallon septic tank. The primary system is slightly uphill, about 18 inches to two feet uphill of the tank, so therefore we need a pump station, which is that, which is the other square right next to the septic tank, and that'll be pumped by force man to the primary system, which is a GeoMatrix-type proprietary system. If there's any questions about the site plan, I'd be more than happy to go over that with you.
Mr. Hoydic?
I have a question on the retention of the water from the building and the impervious areas. Everything on the south side of the slope is going to be channeled into the retention area, the underground detention area?
Yes.
Nothing is going to go on the north side of the house on the other side of the, the hill, or the, whatever you want to call it?
Right. I'll refer to the drainage report because we have...
All underground? Is there going to be any above-ground dispersment or anything, or?
No, it's all underground. So, these are infiltrators will be all, will be all underground, are 12 inches tall, and that'll take the south side runoff from the roof area and the yard area onto the, to that system. The north side of the house and the north side of the site will all drain as, towards the north side of the property.
Yeah, but there's nothing that's going to come from the house or the, whatever decking or impervious area you're going to have around there that's going to go on the other side of that, the north side of the house?
Correct. So, the ridge line is basically along this, is left to right on the page, if you will. This is the, if you will, the ridge line of the house is this way. So, the peak going, from the peak to the back of the house, it's all draining to the, towards the, the rear of the property. The front of the house, if you will, or from the peak forward, will all drain into the cul-de-sac.
The driveway, the right-of-way in the driveway, is that going to be contoured so that the water off the driveway is retained and then released on Whipper Will? Or is that going to be filtered into the?
In the, in the right-of-way, it's not accounted for. It's where we're counting for everything within the property line.
Within the property. Let's say within the property.
Correct. So, no, based on our, on our drainage report, the runoff from the driveway will, will go as the, as where the current contours are. We're basically not changing that, but because we're retaining this much drainage or, or surface runoff from the site, we're basically complying with the engineering requirements, with John Casey's comments and his requirements to decrease stormwater runoff from the site, from the, from the existing conditions to its proposed.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one question, I mean, Washington. So, based on, just to follow up to Mr. Hoydic's question. So, we are not adding any more water to Whipper Will Lane. We are decreasing the amount of water to Whipper Will Lane and even doing further work based on Mr. Casey's comments, which we will comply with. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other que, excuse me, any other questions for this, the architect while he's up?
Included, and I'll wrap this up as rapidly as I can because I know I have a tendency to be long-winded, but I got to be very careful with this petition. Included in some of Mr. Habanski's comments, actually not written comments, but based on a conversation I had with him, let me back up. As part of the application, I submitted a number of documents which included deeds, quickclaim deeds, mortgage documents, et cetera, death deeds and all of that. And if I'm misspoken, Mr. Habanski can stop me right in the middle of my tracks. They could tend to be confusing because you were not privy to a full title search. I have one. It's about 80 pages long, and it gives you a full description of what happened from day one on this property, and it pretty much coincides, document form, with what Mr. Mike Wilson had indicated to you. Now, if the commission would like me to submit this, I'm happy to submit it. But there are a lot of things in here that really would not be, I'm going to use the word relevant, and the town attorney can stop me if he likes, mortgage deeds, death notices, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not so sure. It hasn't been taken apart. All I pulled from here and submitted with the application were those documents that I thought were salient to this application. Now, I'm at your pleasure.
I think you, it would be, my opinion as the chair, if you want to rely on that title search to prove that this lot pre-existed to 1956 in its current configuration, which would support your hardship, then I would submit it.
I'm going to submit it then.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this a single copy?
It's a single copy. Now, there has been, I'm trying to think of the word. When you extract certain information, it's a legal term, out of a legal document, and I, I term that title search a legal document, and maybe you can tell me what word I'm looking for because I can't think of it. An abstract, would that be appropriate? Pretty close. The more salient deeds and information that you could look at, that you might want to look at with descriptions, with copies of maps, et cetera, et cetera. Further, I wanted to make sure that I was correct in not giving this commission false or misleading information because I really think that this is an application that should be approved based on the evidence, based on the hardship. So, I kind of double-checked myself, and I sat with Melinda Fonda, the tax assessor, and she pulled out all of the old assessment records and all of the information, and I matched it later on tonight before I got here with the information contained in that title search and along with the abstract. So, there's a letter in this packet dated September 4th, 2018, from Melinda Fonda, which further describes all of those transactions and how this lot, not building lot yet, was created. And I'd like to submit this in to the record as evidence. Unless you want me to put into the record more law on why this should be approved under Connecticut general statutes, Section 8.6, powers and duties of the Board of Zoning Appeals, if you don't want me to read all of basically the same stuff into it, I will submit these documents into the record as exhibits. Tell me, Mr. Chairman.
I think you should submit them as exhibits.
Okay. There are one, two, three, four, five exhibits. And based on that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions if I haven't touched on anything, or there is something that I said that you didn't understand or you want me to clarify. So often what happens, and this is not a criticism of the board, you may, I may say something that you hear one way, and it's really meant another way. So, if there's any confusion about anything I've said, or any of the experts or the people that came up to speak in favor, now's the time to come get me.
Ms. Young?
Anybody but Mary.
To review some of the things I heard you say to make sure I heard you correctly.
Sure.
You referenced John Casey's August 29th comments.
I did.
And I believe I heard you say, "We agree to do whatever John's asked us to do."
That's correct. That's standard procedure.
So, in the spirit of creating a record that I've heard you suggest is necessary since there seems to be some opposition perhaps in the audience?
Yes.
I would recommend that you put that request in writing or agreement in writing, "We agree to fulfill the requirements outlined by John Casey," so that there's an understanding by us that that is on the record, that understanding. We don't...
I'm not sure that, not to be disagreeable or argument, I don't think that's necessary. I've indicated on the record that we will comply, and the board, if they so choose to approve it, can stipulate any and all comments made by John Casey and his correspondence to Mr. Habanski and myself will be adhered to. That's generally standard procedure if I'm not mistaken.
So, I'll move on to my second request.
I'm sorry?
I heard you reference, I believe today, at the end of the day, there were comments received or phone calls received from the fire department?
Yes.
And you summarized your understanding of those comments?
I'm going to let Mr. Habanski do that if he'd be kind enough since he spoke to the fire marshal directly. Now, it was, let me, let me finish, Mary. It was my understanding, and I was under the misunderstanding that a package, when we formulate a package and submit it to the Board of Zoning Appeals, we submitted 13 packages, I believe. My misunderstanding was one of those packages go to the fire department. They do not. So, when I called the fire department after I looked in the zoning file today to see if all of the comments were in, because traditionally what happens, a lot of these departments wait until the very last second to put their comments in, and then we have no chance to respond to their comments if there is something severe and requires us to do more research. So, I picked up the phone and I called Brian Lambert, the fire marshal. "Brian, you promised me you would get comments. I never received a package from Mr. Habanski." Then, speaking with Mr. Habanski, he indicated to me that it is not the policy of the Board of Zoning Appeals to send something like this over to the fire department, and I asked him if he would talk to Brian because I thought it was an important part of this petition, and I believe it is, even though he did not respond in writing. But he indicated to Mr. Habanski that any improvement basically, and Mr. Habanski can tell you exactly what he said, would help improve the, the access out there, although they had sufficient access to get through that right-of-way because they service the blue house on top of the hill at the very end of that right-of-way. Mary, I'm sorry. I hope that answers your question.
I think it does, but it sounds like in your opinion it's not worth continuing this hearing to allow for receipt of written comments that you're satisfied that getting on the record your understanding and Jay Habanski potentially expanding upon that is sufficient.
We talking about the fire department?
Yes.
You'd have to ask Mr. Habanski that question.
Well, my question was asked of you, and I think you've answered it, and I'll let Mr. Habanski expand if he wants to.
Okay.
But let me finish asking my questions of you if I may. In reading Mr. Habanski's August 24th report to the ZBA members, I believe he references there are seven variances being requested of you?
That's correct.
Or by you. And we heard at the beginning of the hearing a recitation from our agenda as to what is being asked by section reference, excluding other sections. For my benefit, could you take me through the seven variances you are seeking? Because I got a little confused at the beginning of the meeting when you were talking with Mr. Wilson, suggesting to me you weren't conceding the need for some of these variances, yet your name is on the application, your client's name, suggesting they have conceded the need for these variances. So, I would appreciate if you could just tell me what seven variances you are seeking and compiles your application to us this evening.
You're asking me something unless I actually looked at the regulation, which I do not have in front of me, nor did I bring with me tonight. I could answer those questions realistically. Now, obviously, there were a few that stand out in my mind, and I'll be happy to do that. Street frontage, because there's no frontage on an existing street. That would be one of them.
Okay.
Rear yard, because in the rear lot regulation, you need to have two times the rear lot. We don't. We have the regulation size for the one-acre zone. Side yards, two of them. We don't have the rear lot regulation requirement under those, but we have the zoning requirement. Front yard, there is literally, although there is no front yard, one of those is considered a front yard which we can comply with, and quite frankly, I am at a loss what the other ones were unless I have the, right in front of me. Maybe Mr. Habanski, or you could share that with me, and that would be great.
I hope these are up to date. Those are my set of zoning regulations. I have the agenda. My intent was not to stump you tonight, but just to clarify for me and others what exactly, what exact relief you are seeking from us so we can do right by you in evaluating those requests.
3.1, 3.3.1 rear lots. Rear lots is defined under Section 1.24-2 exempt from the 50-foot frontage requirement as long as all other standards in 3.3 are complied with as well as the additional standards. Rear lots are permitted in RS1. We are in a RS1 district, therefore we are not seeking a waiver of that. Okay? That one. Only a single-family residence is permitted on a rear lot. We're not seeking a waiver of that. RS1 district, the rear lot requires 60,000 square feet. We don't have 60,000 square feet. We have 40,000-plus square feet, which does not meet the rear lot requirement, however it does meet the one-acre zone requirement of 40,000 square feet. A rectangular meeting of the minimum lot width and lot depth of the applicable zoning district must fit within the rear lot, and that we do. Excuse me one second. Excuse me one second. I think I can make this easier, Mary.
I didn't hear him speak to it, so that's why I want him to speak to it, but thank you.
Mary, I'm sorry. I can do this very easily. On your map, that was submitted as part of the application, there is a zoning table on the right-hand side of the map, just about a quarter of the way down, you can see it on here, where it says, "Zoning Table of Bulk Requirements." Do you see that on your map?
I do.
Okay. Now, you want me to enumerate what they are verbally? I'll be more than happy to.
In most of the presentations we get, I understood you to say this is unique. We hear, "This is what I need," and recite it, and so I, although you spoke a lot, I didn't hear that recitation.
I'll do it.
It's not necessary, since you pointed to where it can be found, so I won't take up any more time.
Okay, but I'm happy to do it if you'd like.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Dempsey?
Mr. Dempsey, sir?
Mr. Owen, you stated that you have approval by the wetlands.
Yes.
Also, is it a need that it's a building lot to the assessor?
Oh, damn it. Linda, Melanie said it was a building lot.
Well, this is what happened. You are partially correct and partially incorrect. It was at one point assessed as a building lot.
Okay.
To pull a building permit and build.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me. It was assessed that way in error. So, she revised the assessment, which says it is a lot, and that lot, if you want to build on it, is subject to approvals, obviously, wetlands, Board of Zoning Appeals, and ultimately a re-subdivision before the Planning Commission. So, as of right now, we have a lot, and I went through the machinations and jumped through hoops to get the wetlands' approval, because it was important, because of what had happened out there. I got the septic system approval, because I wanted to make sure before I took the next step, which is this step here tonight, that we were able to get a septic system approved. That's approved, through the Health Department, and all of the other departments gave their comments to the extent they did, and as far as I'm concerned, and as far as you can see, I think you'll see, there were no major concerns. There are some conditions that the town engineer would like to see adhered if it's approved, and we have no issue with that, and we have no issue with the fire department. None.
Okay.
So, we are here seeking approval for a waiver to make this a legitimate building lot.
Okay, so now you said it was a building lot in error, and now it's not a building lot.
That's correct.
Are they paying taxes as a building lot?
I was going to get to that. For a period of time, they paid taxes as a building lot, and I asked the assessor by way of a verbal phone call a number of months ago, if the town would refund property taxes based on the fact that they were over-assessing the lot as a building lot, and it was a very short answer to letters.
No.
That's it. Tough luck. You paid it. We don't care if it's our mistake. You're not getting your money back. I even went so far as, "Fine, don't give us the check back. Give us a credit toward the future taxes." They said no. But I will tell you this, even though it's being assessed as a quote-unquote "lot," they're paying $4,000 a year in property taxes to do nothing, to do nothing with, and the prior owners paid just as much, if not more, especially when it's assessed as a building lot for all those years.
Okay. Now, let me get this straight. You have this lot, it was approved by the wetlands, right?
We have approval.
Got approval. Got approval for, approval of the septic tank system.
That's correct.
The cops don't have a problem with it.
The police have no issue.
And the fire department has no issue.
Fire department has no issue.
Okay, and they were paying taxes on the lot.
They're paying taxes currently as a lot.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from our board?
Mary? Thank you.
As chairman, I have a question. Mr. Owen, you elaborated a lot of detail, you and your experts, on the lot itself, and I was wondering, how long is the right-of-way? What improvements are to be made to the right-of-way to address that issue you mentioned about the washout? And you also mentioned the police and fire department, or one of those departments, who's going to be very happy with the improvements, or any improvement. So, I was just wondering if you can address the partial of land that you didn't really address yet.
We can, we can address the partial improvements as designed on our presentation.
Okay.
The additional improvements that Mr. Casey has asked us to do will have to be stipulated to if you approve the petition, and then designed in order to comply with the stipulation and his requirements, which we will do.
Yeah, just, for the record, I just wanted to know what's going to happen there.
Yeah. Would you like to hear more?
I'd like to know the answer to my question.
I'm sorry.
My question is, is the, how long is the driveway? The right-of-way?
It's over 300 feet long.
Okay, and what improvements during, are you willing to commit to, or have you designed in your application to the 300-foot right-of-way?
Some of the improvements have already been included. That is reconfiguration, a little bit of the right-of-way, widening it up, so it's at least 20 feet wide all the way, because in some spaces, it's 18, and there's plenty of room to widen it within that right-of-way, in that designated right-of-way. Other places, it's 24, will be left at 24. There are certain areas that are gravelled, they will be paved. There are drainage that are shown on these drawings that indicated to you by Washington from De Angelis and Company, the engineers, and those stipulations, or those requirements that Mr. Casey has asked for, which are obviously not on this plan, because we've only seen them yesterday.
Understand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. But we will comply.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, Ms. Streets?
Yeah, I mean, I'm reading here, and you've alluded to it, or discussed it a little bit, about how the Wetlands Commission approved, but hasn't finalized your application, and that's because the bond hasn't been completed.
Right.
Can you say why that hasn't happened?
Let me answer that in two parts. Thank you for the question, Ms. Streets. The wetlands' application has been approved, so we are done with that process. What hasn't been calculated yet is the bond figure, that the wetland commission will adhere to the permit, and the time limit at that point of what we will do to go forward once that bond is, once that permit is finalized and the bond is posted. So, what has not been done yet is the bond hasn't been posted, so therefore, we don't have the permit in our hand. In a lot of instances, this is, this is not unusual. I know it sounds like it's a huge deal. It's not a huge deal. I mean, we come before boards and commissions all the time, as you know, you've seen me before. We ask for permission to do things. We get granted approval, and then we will go pull our building permit. That's the same kind of situation here. So, in other words, if you granted this, we can't pull a building permit tomorrow. We have to post our bond. We have to do the wetland improvements, and I hope it didn't go really unnoticed when I stated it, and maybe I didn't state it hard enough, and I'd like to state it one more time for the record. If this board approves this waiver, we still have to get our permit, not the approval from the wetlands, have to get our permit. We have to plant, and we have to wait four years to see if that plantation takes effect or replace whatever doesn't take effect before we are able to get a building permit. Now, what stops us from getting a building permit once you approve this petition, if you approve it tonight? On the building petition itself, there was a sign-off from each department. Wetlands, they don't sign off, we don't get a permit. Zoning, they don't sign off, we don't get a permit. I think fire and engineering, I think it's the same situation there. We need those sign-offs to get a permit. So, there are belts and suspenders to this approval if you approve them. We just can't start tomorrow. I hope I've answered that question for you.
You did. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just curious, out of all of those steps and approvals that you need to acquire, which has precedence over the other, if any? For example, would wetlands have precedence over engineering or what have you?
I'm not sure I fully understand your question, but if you are asking, what comes, and I'm not being a smart aleck.
What comes first?
What comes first, the chicken or the egg?
That's right.
Okay, I think what has to happen, let me do it backward. In order to pull a building permit, which is the final stage, that's the ultimate, to pull a building permit, I have to meet all the requirements of all the other boards and commissions first. I'm not sure that answers your question.
Yes.
I'm trying here.
You can answer.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hoydic.
Yeah, I have a question, seeing that Ms. Street brought this up. Why has it been, for two years, not one piece of remediation has been done on the violation? The commission agreed that after two growing seasons, that they would review the violation, and if it was done properly, we would release the violation. So, you lost two years. Why?
Mr. Hoydic, I knew that question was going to come up, and there's only one logical, honest, reasonable answer. There have been extenuating circumstances, nothing to do with this property, with Mr. Hirsch. It has zero to do with it. This job is going to get done. He has had other personal issues that I am not at liberty to discuss with this commission, nor really is the commission privy to it, but this job will get done. That is the truthful answer.
Okay. Thank you.
I know it's not the answer you're looking for, but that's the answer.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Young?
When I was discussing the fire department commentary received over the phone today, the applicant suggested Mr. Hibansky may want to weigh in. I didn't know if Mr. Hibansky wanted to weigh in further on what was said by whom.
Sure, well, I can address a few things. So, when we refer applications out to be reviewed by other town staff, you know, we try to select the departments that are going to have the most relevant comments. In general, a single-family home approval would not go to the fire marshal's office, only because they regulate three families, commercial dwellings, I'm sorry, commercial structures, or multifamily. So, typically, we wouldn't refer to them, however, I do see the emergency apparatus being, and access to this site being relevant. So, that's the first part. The second part, after speaking with Fire Marshal Lampart, I wouldn't say I disagree with what Mr. Owen said. I think that the fire marshal seemed confident that, you know, if the board were to make an approval, there would have to be some improvements, and he wouldn't, and the fire marshal wouldn't be able to say one way or the other whether or not they could do it until he sees the actual plan that's being presented to the board today.
To that end, do you think it's useful for a formal referral to be sent by your department to the fire marshal and allow this hearing to be continued to get that comment on the record, or is that not prudent at this stage, in your opinion?
Well, I would leave that up to the applicant and the board. You know, after speaking with the fire marshal, you know, I think that the variances at hand can be, could potentially be weighed in on by this board, regardless of whether, you know, emergency apparatus is able to access it, based on the commentary from the fire marshal saying that there's a way to, there would be a way to modify the access way, given that there's already a building up there, although it's challenging to access. So, you know, if the applicant felt that the fire marshal's opinion would benefit his presentation, then I would recommend that he postpone or continue to next month, but that would be up to you folks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Owen.
Are you looking for a comment on Mr. Hibansky's question? If we would, if the board would prefer something in writing from the fire marshal? I'd like to know that. I think that's important.
I think we'll deliberate that in executive, in administrative session, and if we... Let me ask you this question, then. Should the board see it of interest to the board to have a written response from the fire department or any emergency service providers? Would you pre-agree, well, I guess, would you be okay with that if we tabled?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
I think it's important.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time. I'm sorry it was that long, but there's a lot of information here. Appreciate you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this petition?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Ed Schofield. I live at 140 Butternut. I have a pretty lengthy presentation with some exhibits and some legal citations as well. I'm not sure what the board's pleasure is. I'm happy to begin now. I'm guessing it'll be probably a similar length of time to Mr. Owen's.
Let me take a poll to the board. Would the board like, hold on one second, Mr. Schofield. Would the board like to take a recess? May I look at my board, or you want to just go right into this?
Right here.
Okay, there you go.
All right, that's fine, thank you. There will be, I would request at some point a recess, because there have been some documents handed up I have not had a chance to review, so at some point, I'll want to have a chance to review those, and I may have some comments on those as well, but I'm happy to begin right now.
Certainly.
Thank you. Right now, meaning after I grab my notes. Thanks.
but it is, it bears relevance. There have all been questions from the board about it, and I can't let stand certain statements that have been made tonight about the wetlands' process, which I think amount to a misrepresentation about the status of the wetlands' process. This episode began on April 26, 2016, when I met Mr. Hirsch in my, in our adjoining backyards, and he told me, when I asked him about this property, because I shared with him my understanding, as an abutting landowner, that there were significant questions about the zoning of this parcel, because when I bought the land, and later, when the land, the home, was being renovated at 320 Whipperville, I inquired of zoning what the status of that property was behind me, behind my wife and my property, and I've been told by zoning that there were significant roadblocks to any further development of that parcel. So, I shared that with Mr. Hirsch. I said, "Mr. Hirsch, nice to meet you, but I've learned that I, in the past, I may be wrong, that there are significant problems with this land." Mr. Hirsch said to me that day, "Don't worry. I've been to the town. I've already got all the approvals I need." I scratched my head. I'm inclined to take people at their word. I went down to town hall the next day. I started, using Mr. Owen's rationale, I started backwards. I started at the point of final approval for building permits. I went to the building department. They never heard of Mr. Hirsch, or Ms. Wolf, the owner of the property. The gentleman in zoning, I may have his name wrong, it may have been Brian, he told me that his understanding of that parcel, he was familiar with it, was it was not a buildable piece of land. I went to zoning. I met with Mr. Wasatsky at that time. He pulled out the maps. He told me he believed there were significant roadblocks to development. He thought there had been perhaps an illegal subdivision in the past. Talked about the history of this land. It may be reflected by the title searches that's been handed up. I have my own land records, which may be duplicative of the materials that have been presented to the board, but since I haven't reviewed them, I have no way of knowing that, so I'll hand them up anyway. I then went back and asked, I said, "Well, what does that mean?" Because Mr. Hirsch had begun clearing the land, and I was told, "Well, that's no problem. Even if he doesn't have a building permit, it's his land, and he can take trees down." The next day, that tree cutting turned into a wholesale clearing of the land, as Mr. Hoydic knows, since he's a member of the commission at that time, and to the point where it was going down to the corner of the lot, which you'll see on the map, down here near Jill's property, Ms. Perkins, she's given me a letter of opposition, by the way, which I'll hand up later, she couldn't join us tonight. Ms. Perkins, there's a swamp indicated on the map, and there's the 50-foot, on one of the maps you've been presented with, there's a 50-foot zoning setback from that property. So, we were concerned then that there was going to be some kind of a wetlands' problem. Mr. Wasatsky came right out, that... Mr. Wissatsky came right out that Friday, three days later, and issued a cease and desist on the land because he discovered that there had been clearing throughout the entire, but there was another misrepresentation, by the way. We were told today by Mr. Owen that the house does not, sits outside the upland review area for this property. That's completely false. The upland review area, because it's the pumpkin ground book, is 250 feet. So it actually extends throughout virtually the entirety of the lot. So while it's not in the wetlands itself, the building, the upland review does include all the proposed development. So back to my account, and I'll try to breathe as brief as I can. We then, once we discovered the wetlands violation, that triggered the entire process, of course, of wetlands review. Because of the cease and desist, work stopped. The Commission issued the appropriate orders for compliance. That was in the spring of 16. We didn't get to a hearing on this case for a year. So in addition to the year and a half, or year and four months of delay since the Commission's issuance of the permit on or about May 17 of 2017, we had another year, two additional growing seasons that were lost because the applicant and owner didn't show up for a couple of the scheduled hearings on their application. I know that because I and other members of my neighborhood were sitting here when he didn't show up for those hearings. So I was inquired, I was surprised. A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Owen called me, and it was a courtesy, and I do appreciate it. He called me and said, "Hey, we're going to go before zoning." And I said to him, "Nick, how can that be? I look out my backyard, I don't see that you folks have lifted a finger in connection with the restoration that's been ordered on this land by a coordinate board of our town." And he admitted to me, I appreciated his candor, that in fact, nothing had been done. And he described, and I won't share them, but he described some personal circumstances that made that difficult. I said, "Well, why are we going before zoning, then?" And what I've seen in this, and by the way, that prompted me, because I didn't want to be mistaken, I don't want to make a misrepresentation, although I'm a lawyer, I don't practice in the area of zoning law, but I want to be careful. I reached out to Ms. Bado, and I said, "Am I mistaken? Has something been done on this property?" So I wrote her an email, and she wrote me back, and she said, "In fact, nothing has been done. The fine was paid. There was a $500 fine. No bond has been posted. No work has been done. They were ordered to have their engineer submit reports every 30 days of work on the property. That's 15 months ago. Nothing has happened." An important and significant point for this Board to consider is that Mr. Owen suggested that there was this notion of, "Oh, we'll pull the bond, and then we'll begin our work, and then the four years will start ticking." That's not what the Commission ordered. I don't have a transcript of the Board's proceedings, but I can refer, I know that the, and this will seem a little bit silly, perhaps, but I know there's a YouTube record of every Board meeting. And I've got the citation to the precise minutes of that, of that order, when the Wetlands Commission issued its order pertaining to this property at 350 Whipperwill. And I'll give, I'll give that to the Commission in a moment. But just, just to make this very, very, point very clearly, significantly, he said, "The work on restoration is to begin immediately, and certainly within 30 days." That was 14 months ago. Nothing has happened. So putting aside for a moment the question of the impact that lot to have on the consideration of this Board, it's clear that the town needs to consider that there are coordinate agencies, we heard about the Fire, the Fire Marshal, the wetlands is another one of those agencies. And it seems to me that what the wetlands was told, by the way, and this is also in the, in the proceedings that you can view at your leisure on YouTube, was told that, "Oh, by the way," and Mr. Owen was frank about this, "we're going to be going to zoning also. But the meetings of the April, April 2017 meeting reflect restoration will commence nonetheless. Restoration will come first." Didn't mean that he wasn't, he was waiving his right to go in and start the ball rolling on zoning. But what was told to the Wetlands Commission was, "We're going to get going on this, then we're going to get going to zoning also." Now the zoning Board is being told, "Hey, folks, we've put wetlands on hold. We want you to give us the go-ahead. Then we'll go back and start with wetlands." And what Ms. Bado told me, and I'm happy to share it, she wrote me back an email, and what she said is that in fact, from her perspective, since they've done their work, in all likelihood, the permit will be revoked. And there's no permit. There's no approval. And that there may well be instead an order of compliance. So it seems to me that there's been a misrepresentation to this Board about the status of a very important proceeding that brought a group larger than this one to this very chamber 15 months ago to protest the actions of this particular landowner. And I don't think that should be lost on this Board. So now I will turn to the actual zoning application, because I have a lot to say about that as So the rear lot, the rear lot restrictions, you know, you get, sometimes you get hyper-technical when you look at, I say this as an amateur, because I'm learning this as I go along. But when you look at the various zoning requirements, you know, there's a 30-foot height restriction, there's, and then somebody's building is going to be 33 feet high, and things like that. And there can be de minimis differences that a zoning Board might well overlook or decide in balancing the interests of the homeowner and the interests of the community, which it's bound to do, that it's going to tip the balance one way or the other. But these rear lot restrictions have a purpose. And the idea is that you're putting a lot in between, typically, between other homeowners. You've got limited road access. And there, there's a rationale for requiring bigger setbacks, a bigger footprint. There's a reason for it. And part of it is that you're sticking this house in between two other pieces of property, and it affects the aesthetic value and the enjoyment of, of the land of the other citizens and taxpayers of the town. So especially when that is taken into account with what I understood from tonight, I wasn't sure what I would hear on this score, but what we heard is that Mr. Hirsch, thanks to Mr. Wilson's candor with him in the sale process, was told forthrightly that this was not a buildable lot. It was not, it needed approvals. It was not, it didn't come prepackaged, ready to go. So he took a risk. And there is law that, you know, you, you take some risk if you buy a piece of property, and you're not guaranteed really by the fact that you bought it, from, you know, immediate return on your investment. In that regard, and I've got plenty of law on this, the courts have made it very clear on this edition of self-created hardship, that the knowledge of the homeowner and what he's, what he's buying is relevant. There's the Spalding case, that's at 144 Connecticut, 719. The MISC case, M-I-S-U-K, 138 Connecticut, 477. The Hirsch, and by the way, this is very important here, and this will be relevant when the, when the panel reviews, the Board reviews, the land records. The actions of the predecessor in interest, just as Mr. Owen said rightly, that these variances can run with the land, your, those actions are attributable to you. So when Mr. Hirsch and Ms. Wolf rather takes title to this land, if actions of her predecessor entitle, Mr. Wilson and his wife, Ms. Ede, E-D-E, when they decided to make an illegal subdivision and create a non-conforming lot, well, unfortunately for him, Mr. Hirsch and Ms. Wolf, they take subject to that decision. And that hardship is not one that they can now come before the Board and ask for relief from. And cases on that, they're legion, but one would be Sidoriyak, S-Y-D-O-R-I-A-K versus Prospect 90, Connecticut, appellate 649, 2005. Also, that predecessor, if they created an undersized lot, for example, that, that-
It wasn't created a lot, it was left that way.
Mr. Owen, you're out of, Mr. Owen, you're out of order.
The land records will reflect-
My apologies, Mr. Owen. Whoever just spoke was out of order. Everyone needs to-
I apologize.
Another case on that principle is Bellnap versus Easton, 155 Connecticut, 380. Again, the predecessor creating a nonconformity, there's a case in Stratford, Santos versus Stratford, 100 Connecticut, appellate 644 from 2007. Now, the idea has been suggested that there's some, and I think one of the members of the Board alluded to the fact that there had been a, as it turned out, erroneous assessment of the property as a building lot. And that's unfortunate, because it was inaccurate. And I haven't seen Ms. Fonda's letter yet. I'll certainly review it. But the, the records reflect the conveyance tax records of the town, as well as the deed itself reflects that the property was purchased for $20,000. A small fraction of what the assessed value was, consistent with the idea that someone might be buying a piece of land that was not a recognized building lot and would require some significant steps to become one. Also, the law is crystal clear that no individual financial hardship of the landowner is cognizable as a reason for granting a variance. There was mention of this idea of a confiscation, you know, like, almost like an inverse condemnation. The problem with that is that the law is clear that you're not entitled to a building lot. There are, there are cases, for instance, just a couple of quick examples, you know, disappointment in the use is insufficient under Jayser versus Milford, 43 Connecticut, appellate 545. Another point is there are cases, for instance, there was one where property wasn't a building lot, but it retained a use for recreational use, Hofer versus Oxford, 64 Connecticut, appellate 39. Or it had value for the abutting landowner. That was its prior use. It was another acre of land owned by the folks who at one time owned 320 Whipperwill and decided to divide that into two parcels. Well, they, they used to have a two, over two acres of land, and then they decided to divide it in two. Norwood versus Branford is a citation for that, 62 Connecticut, appellate 528. So, and then in general, and I don't, again, I, Town Attorney is present, you folks have more experience in this than I do, and as does Mr. Owen, but the general principles on variance, you recited some concepts of, you know, the Board having some obligation to grant a variance. I think as you, as you know, the courts look at it a little bit differently. The courts put a pretty strict parameters around the granting of variances, and suggest that they ought to be granted only in exceptional and unusual circumstances, should be granted with great caution, and the power ought to be sparingly exercised. Creppco versus Hartford, 152 Connecticut, 657. The Horace case, 85 Connecticut, appellate 162. And the Jayser case I cited earlier, 43 Connecticut, appellate 545. Turning more to the facts of the application that's before the Board, there was a question about the various restrictions in the rear lot, the listing under 3.1, or 3.31, I guess. And one that was, I think, omitted from, or maybe I missed it, I may, in fairness, I may have missed it. In addition to the overall lot area that's required, which is a pretty substantial deviation, by the way, it's not a de minimis deviation at all. There's the issue of the, of the setbacks. The rear lot restrictions require one and a half times the normal setback, so that would be, by my math, another 17 and a half feet, and it's not proposed. It's proposed that it be exactly at the 35-foot mark, so that's not accounted for in any way by the proposal. That's a substantial variance that's being sought. And the other one is the idea of the rectangle fitting in the property, which is one of the specific requirements of 3.3. So those, in addition, obviously, to the driveway, I won't belabor it, the driveway has been much discussed already. And it's, you know, the attendant safety concerns and others. So I guess in terms of the specifics of the, of the lot and the various, the number of variances that have been requested, it's not, it's not de minimis, it's a substantial alteration of what the rear lot prescriptions were designed to achieve. And under these circumstances, on this showing, it's grossly insufficient to justify the Board's issuing the variance requested. So I have a couple of things I would like to hand up. Hand up copies, and I apologize, I only have five copies for the Board of my exchange with Ms. Bado of late last week. She wrote me on August 30. You'll see my, as often happens with email documents, the last page is my request to her, where I followed up on the question of what had happened at 350 on the, on the requirements. And then she wrote back to me, as you'll see, speaks for itself, her, her response of August 30 follows. As I mentioned earlier, another abutting landowner is Jill Perkins. She's at 110 Butternut. I'm handing up copies. I'm handing up copies of a letter from Jill opposing the zoning application for variance as well. Other abutting landowners include Mike and Paula Malika. Paula is here and may wish to address the panel herself this evening. Just a quick point of order for the, not point of order, rather, but a point of information for the record. One of the points you'll see mentioned in my email exchange with the Administrator of our Wetlands Commission was the question of a conservation easement. One of the requirements of the Wetlands Commission was that the applicant grant easement in favor of the town of Stratford. That's nowhere reflected on any of the documentation that's been submitted to this, this Board, nor, according to Ms. Bado, has it been provided to the town. There's a comment, I'd refer the panel also, I don't have copies, but to the minutes of the Wetlands Board on April 27, 2017, it's a matter of public record, under Old Business, Section A, toward the bottom. Mr. Owen's noted this application has to therefore, has to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission. There is no issue with granting an easement. That refers to the conservation easement. I apologize for burdening the record, but it may ultimately be faster for me to simply hand up these deeds and maps rather than go through the record of what you already have. You may end up with some duplication, but just so the record's clear, I would offer the following documents. I have a photocopy of a series of deeds relating to parcels that are either part of this original farm that we heard described today, or other neighboring parcels, along with a series of four maps that you'll see often referred to in these deeds. And you can, with the review of these, trace the history of these lots and make your own judgment. And again, I understood the comment from the crowd, your own judgment about the history of the lot and whether subdivision is required, because again, I profess no expertise in So in addition to that stapled group of deeds, there are in total, I believe, four, four I may be mistaken, but I believe that map number 3388 actually supersedes 3384, but it is referred to a number of times, so I'm going to hand that up as well. Just so the record's clear, these are all maps I obtained from the Stratford Town Clerk's Office, and they are numbered 3267, 3384, 3388, and 3406. So just so I, before I conclude my presentation on that, the, there was reference, Mr. Owen made reference to a particular contact, I think, that had been made with the previous zoning officer, Mr. Gary, I think it's Lawrenson, Lawrenson. And there is a reference, and I'm not sure whether this is reflected elsewhere in the records of our Planning and Zoning Commission, but I will find, there was a reference in one of the deeds, or a deed correction as well, to that very concept. There's a note in the, it would be found among other places, if there's a full title search, I'm sure it's there as well, but at volume 2016, page 18 of the Stratford Land Records, there's a paragraph which talks about various parcels reflected in the deeds at volume 1857. And at the end, there's a statement, "Parcell number two," which I believe, and I, again, I leave it to the judgment of the Board, I believe refers to the property at 320 Whipperwill. "Parcell number two is the only legal building lot at this time, leaving the remaining parcels subject to future building lots upon approval from the Stratford zoning department." And obviously, it would be our position that that would provide, it was going to be my position that that would provide notice to a potential purchaser of- position that that would provide notice to a potential purchaser of the land, but we've already been told that Mr. Hirsch and Ms. Wolf were told directly that the property was encumbered by that additional requirement. And those maps, at least several of them are referred to also, I should say, here on the actual zoning location survey, but just for convenience. Subject to my having a chance to review the documents such as Mr. Abansky's report and the engineering report, and I may have additional comments, but I would conclude now and like to reserve my right, though, to speak again if I have any comments on those documents.
Certainly. And if Mr. Schofield, since you submitted so much information, if you give the board an opportunity to ask you a few questions, does the board have any questions for Mr. Schofield at this time? I know he's not the applicant, he's in opposition, but, yes, Ms. Young.
I heard you referencing what the zoning board should be looking at in general when reviewing any application. Can you speak succinctly to your proximity to this proposal and your objections to some of the requests being made by the applicant as they relate to your ownership of your property?
Sure. My property is here, so if you picture the land here, there was talk about the building, if you have that here. So the home, the home would be here, the proposed home. There's the 35 foot setback, that's 35 feet closer than it should be if the rear lot provisions of the town of Stratford are adhered to. Likewise, Ms. Malika and her husband, Mike, live over here, so, you know, it would be much closer to them as well. I can't speak to the folks at 320, I'm not sure if folks in 320, they're just newly bought the property within the last couple of weeks, I'm not sure if they're here tonight. But from my perspective, there's that issue. There's the fact that our proposed new neighbor, and this is just a personal, this may not be a cognizable thing before the board, has shown a rolefulness to, you know, break the land conservation laws of the state of Connecticut and has not remedied, despite an order of the Wetlands Commission has not remedied the property. And we've got back there, we had beautiful 40, 50, 60 foot trees that were clear cut. And as a result, Ms. Malika can address this, there were, wildlife was disturbed, so I think there's a concern about the aesthetic value of the land. I think that's a principle that the zoning board is entitled to consider, as well as the peaceful enjoyment of the, of the neighborhood. There was talk about runoff, I heard about drainage, I haven't studied that, I don't have a, we had an expert witness at Wetlands, I haven't had anybody study whether, I was told that the, I understood the question about the runoff not going toward the Wetlands, and that's really good, but I'm, you know, I have some concern, I mean, when the trees were cut down, we were getting some water pooling in our backyard, so I'm, the property runs down toward our property, could be that the construction or the building could create runoff in our direction, so those are some of my initial thoughts. I mean, this, again, the rear lot concept is, is not ephemeral, it's, it's, it's got a purpose. It's a purpose to preserve the neighborhood and the feel, look and feel of the neighborhood. And by ignoring the various restrictions completely with respect to lot size and so forth, it has a deleterious effect on the enjoyment of the land by the abutting landowners.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that caveat, unless there are other...
Any other questions before Mr. Schofield? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schofield. Would anybody else like to speak in opposition to this petition?
Hello, counsel, my name's Richard Serniglia. I own 420 Whipporwill Lane, which is... Oh, C-E-R-N-I-G-L-I-A. And I don't, I don't know if, I'm not speaking opposed or for right now, I'm not sure where I stand. I did come to the wetland hearings, Brian, I met him a bunch of times, great guy, I talked to him, you know, because we're going to be direct neighbors. I own the house on the street, he would be crossing through the right of way to get to his property. Back 2002, I purchased land from Mr. Wilson, an acre lot, with the intent, at one day his beating, it was kind of pitched at the time, a building lot to me. I, on my, my fault, and we did not do our homework, we came to the town a couple times, everyone in the building department said, absolutely no way could you build there, there's two houses on the right of way, you need an acre and a half, and you need a 25 foot right of way. So, and for me, that takes more land away from my house with the 25 foot right of way. If you were to follow the guidelines and do, you know, what I've been told, I believe that's in town record as well, that it's supposed to be an acre and a half for rear lot and a 25 foot right of way. You know, I told Brian right from the get-go when I met him, I'm all for him building back there, but I like to see it done the right way, so it's not so much impact on my property. I already have one house in the back that has access to River Valley Road, which is 320. There's actually a right of way on town maps on record that they can use that, and I believe they're supposed to, but because there was never anything else built back there on Wood Road or whatever you want to call it, they were never forced to use that. They had the option to use either one at a time, Michael was living in the house when, when this was all going on. So, you know, I'd love to see a house back there, it would make the area clean it up. I, I understand there's been some wetland things, you know, if Brian takes the proper actions, which I was, would think he would, anyone in good faith would do the right thing. But, you know, for me as a property owner, having the house on the street, I'm concerned now with a third house going up and a house that's back there already. And my house, that's three sets of cars or families with cars going, and the right of way cuts directly through my property. It doesn't cut along the border or anything like that, so now I have extra traffic coming through my property. You know, I've had UPS trucks, I've seen them try to get to 320 and slide backwards down that driveway in the winter. So I don't know how a fire truck would have, that's a bigger, heavier vehicle. I do a lot of snow plowing, I'm in the landscape industry, so I know what ice and all that stuff could do, is pose, you know, hazards for like, stuff like that. The other issue that I do have, which I'm a little shocked Brian didn't reach out to me because he, we've talked and text, I never was notified of this. I thought you were supposed to be, mailers were supposed to go out to all adjoining property owners about a meeting like this. I never received anything, not a letter, not anything from the post office saying, hey, you missed this. I never received anything. I even contacted my tenant, seeing maybe he received that at the property, and he never received anything. So, you know, that kind of leads, rubs me a little bit the wrong way when I thought I had a good relationship with, you know, with Brian and Mike and all this kind of stuff. Again, my concerns are, you know, if I, as a person, I, and I understand his headaches, this is a terrible thing to go through, but I purchased a piece of property, it was one acre, assuming one acre zoning, I was flat out told, there's no way you'll ever build, and I was forced by the town to combine it with my property because I didn't, that lot didn't have ample road for it. So, I have now 1.36 acres on Whipporwill Lane with a right of way 277 feet from the street to my back, to my property line. It cuts directly through. I don't think I'm on, my picture's on one of these. So, I'm just a little concerned if there's now three houses with traffic and if there's kids, you know, it's just a lot to ask for all those cars to go through one property. Listen, if 320 was enforced to use a River Valley Road entrance, that's fine, that would be great. I mean, I think that would be not an unreasonable stipulation to make this go through, just the extra traffic and the lot size, you know? There's plenty of land still over there in that area where we can make the 1.5 if he needed it, or, you know, other things can happen, so he could do what he wants to do the right way. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is anyone else in attendance that would like to speak in opposition? Yes.
Hi, my name is Paula Malika, and my property butts up to where the property was clear cut. When I, I was...
I'm sorry, your address?
Oh, 160 Butternut Lane, Malika, M-O-L-L-I-C-A. So, my husband and I were the first ones to see the for sale sign on Whipporwill, and when we saw the for sale sign, we thought it was the big blue house that's up on the hill. And I went down to town hall and I said, gee, they're selling the big blue house, and the guy says, no, there's nothing for sale there. And I said, no, there's a big sign for sale. So, they went on Google Earth, they swooped down, and he says to me, well, it's not that house, it's the property. And I said, what property? And he says, there's an unbuildable lot behind your house. So I said, well, if it's an unbuildable lot, how can you sell it? He goes, well, they can sell the land, but they cannot build on the land. I was told the same thing as Ed. Then, all of a sudden, I'm outside one day and I hear roaring, 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 and they came through like locusts and clear cut the property. I went out there, I begged them to stop, the guy was rude, he told me to F, get off the property, not the owner, but the guy who was clear cutting. They cut down the trees that had nesting red-tailed hawks, we no longer see the turtles, we no longer have the ducks. The, the nature of the neighborhood has been disrupted. So, at one point, when we were in front of the Wetlands Commission, Mr. Owens said that they actually had cleaned up the property because there were cars and refrigerators and tires. I've lived there for 20 years, there was not a single tire, there was nothing but mature trees with low growing brush. And now, the property is a mess. There's been no remediation, the brush is now all overgrown, it impacts my area, and what the rest of the neighbors are upset about and what we're thinking ahead to is, is that right behind my house, supposedly, this lot can be extended. So, I actually came to town hall a week ago and asked them, who owns the property behind me, and they couldn't come up with the answer. But I think the answer is, you own the property behind me.
I do.
Okay. So, you know, you, so when we went to the town and they told us it was an unbuildable lot, the three neighbors where it would have been impacted, we had actually talked about buying the lot so that it would stay plain acreage, and then we wouldn't have had any kind of a problem. But we couldn't find out who owned the property, I came to town hall and nobody could tell me who owned the property. So, you would have made more money if you waited for the three of us, because we would have given you...
Ms. Malika, if you could just address the board, not the audience, thank you.
So, anyway, that is a big concern for us. I, there's still a beautiful piece of property behind my house that runs into a gully, but I no longer believe what I'm told when I come down to town hall. So, I've been told again that the lot directly behind me is unbuildable, but I don't trust that statement at all. So I'm petrified that I'm going to come home one day and everything is going to be clear cut completely through the neighborhood. So, I, I just really hope that everybody pays attention to the environment, the neighbors, and we can come to some kind of resolution. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here would like to speak in opposition? Yes.
Good evening, my name is Anne Ribbin, I live at 40 Butternut Lane, and I agree with everything that's been said before me, I'm against this, and I think that you have to take into consideration the character of the person, I'll use that word, I, I will just say the character of the person who is submitting the application. He was given a directive to replant the land and remediate the damage that was done, and nothing has been done. Mr. Owens keeps saying that they will comply with all regulations, and they have failed to comply with the very first, most basic regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, everyone, I'm Patrick Ribbin, 40 Butternut Lane. I'd just like to point out that the Wilson family owned all the property up there for years and years and years, and I think that's a wonderful thing. Whipporwill Lane, Bill McNeil and his father grew up right on Whipporwill Lane, and the two houses that are there now, actually touching the property that is in question, was part of the O'Neills, too. Now, Bill O'Neil and his father bought Butternut Lane, and they said that we're going to build the houses here, and none of the property in the back owned by the Wilsons can be used because it's wetlands and a bunch of other things. Well, there's been a couple of things happen that I think were very negative over that period of time. Butternut Lane was built as a wide streets, new, there's nine houses on the street, and a full town sewer system, water, gas, and everything else. So it had everything that you wanted. We bought the house in February of 1985, so we've been there for 33 years, and it's been great. Great poker games, Ed's played poker with us, and everybody's played poker with us. And I think everybody had young kids, now they're all grown up and gone and having a good time. But the things that happened, I think, were pretty negative. And my point of just mentioning some of the things that, when we bought our property, Bill said, and I have the maps at home showing that the Wilson property touched our property, and we said, oh, that's great, that's great. Well, what happened? In the early 90s, they're building properties over on River Road, or whatever that extension is over there, and they needed a sewer. And they wouldn't allow the sewer to happen over there at all. So what did they have to do? They had to go through Wilson property and through my neighbor's property, somebody paid off everybody back and forth to do it, so they could attach the sewer on Butternut Lane for people over on River Road, which was done by somebody, and whether it was all bucks in hand, who knows? But nobody could do anything about it because we just didn't do anything about it. Secondly, a piece of property was sold, or bought from, I don't know whether it was the Wilsons or not, but, and a property was built behind my next door neighbor's house and actually attached to our property in the back. And there were a lot of negative things done with that, too. And nobody's friends there, unfortunately. So I think that what I'm looking at with, with a nice little neighborhood like that, and the people that have been there, Bill McNeil lived in Ed's house and he sold it to Ed, and Bill moved back to his mother's house on Whopper Hillwell Lane so he could play poker down there with his two dogs. Anyway, I think there's a lot of negative things that are done out there. And I'm on the waterfront commission, I've been there for 12 years, and we've done a lot of things, and we're still trying to get the Army engine plant taken care of. So everybody has problems, but I think you people are good, and I think what you really need to do is just do what you think is right. And I think that you can do that. So I appreciate you listening to me, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this petition in opposition? Seeing none, Mr. Schofield?
I don't need to look at those documents, I think, Mr. Chairman, but I did want to give you the citation to the record of that prior hearing. It's found at the YouTube presentation, or record, rather, of the May 17, 2017 Wetlands hearing. The commission's order was issued between, the hour and minute mark is one hour, 5 minutes, 49 seconds, up to including one hour, 10 minutes, and 10 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schofield, would you like to submit any of your maps for the record, or are those just for presentation purposes?
These are, I think, Mr. Owens' maps.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think I, the stuff I submitted were actually just from the...
Okay, got it. I'm sorry. I meant to...
I think these are apples.
Next time I have to ask Jay to speak into my good ear. Mr. Owen, would you like the floor?
Thank you.
Mr. Owen was asking me for the certificates of mailing, if you could take a look at them, I indicated I had...
I can take a look at the certificates of mail, number one. And before I forget, I think I already, by way of rebuttal, I am going to submit for the record all of these maps of the commission has... for the record all of these maps, so the commission has them. I'm going to take the last first, I know Mr. Gibbons, nice people, nice family, I'm not sure what the relevance to this petition was with playing poker, and Mr. McNeil, and all of that. In fact, I bought a number of properties up there, if it's relevant, from Mr. McNeil, back in the day when he was around. Again, and I'm not sure that I need to really reiterate it or dwell on it, the, this is the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have approval from the Wetlands Commission, we have not yet finalized the permit, which is the next step. It does not, however, prohibit this board from granting a waiver on a property based on all of my testimony presented before this commission this evening. What I am concerned about is apples and oranges are being mixed. Attorney Schofield is a complete gentleman, I respect him greatly, I understand where he's coming from, the neighborhood is mad because of what happened, I get it. If this were a normal set of circumstances, we'd come before the board, I doubt very seriously there would be this kind of opposition if that land were not clear-cut. I get it, they're aggravated, nothing has been done, I can tell Mr. Hoydic is not happy because he sat on that petition. However, once that permit is pulled, and it will be pulled, and I was honest when I said there were outstanding other circumstances not involved in this property, why that permit is not complete, but it's approved, and this commission has every right to do it. With regard to the gentleman that said he did not receive a notice, and I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, sir?
Cerniglia.
Cerniglia, he lives at 410 Whipperwell Lane, he is correct, I don't see a copy in there, however, that right is waived by the mere fact that he's attended this hearing, so he knows there was a, a public hearing tonight. Not only did he know, he's in attendance, and I apologize to him, that was inadvertently missed, he should have got a notice, but this is constructive notice, and you heard from him tonight, so that negates that argument. With respect to the location of the house as presented by, by Attorney Schofield, it is not in any of the wetlands area at all, you can see on the map where it's located. There is no wetlands on this property that has been disturbed, or that will be disturbed. And again, we're all getting lost in this wetlands issue, which has already been resolved by way of an approval. Once that permit is pulled, the work will be done, this project will be on its way. The, what happens in some of these hearings, it becomes a popularity contest, how many are in favor, how many are against, that's not what we're here for. We are here seeking a waiver under the Connecticut general statutes, dash, six, parentheses, small three, and we are in full compliance, and we are entitled to the variance under the law. And with that, I rest for the time being, if anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. If you wish to continue this hearing until you get your reports from the Fire Department, I have no issue with that, I welcome those reports.
Ms. Young?
I've heard Mr. Owen reference Mr. Hoydic's participation while serving on the Wetlands Commission at least three times during his presentation, and I thought it perhaps prudent for the record, if Mr. Hoydic can say, should he feel this way, that he is able to act independently of any prior participation on the Wetlands Commission as he reviews this application this evening, which I assume he is capable of doing, but perhaps since we're all creating a record here tonight, it would be good to get that on the record.
Mr. Hoydic? So, if I understand you correctly, you'd like Mr. Hoydic, you're asking Mr. Hoydic, he can act on this petition arms-length with his prior knowledge from the Wetlands Commission, and not with any bias?
Correct.
Yes, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for your time.
And thank you, and I owe you an apology, I called you out of order when it was not you who spoke.
That's all right, not a problem.
You were in order, Mr. Owen.
I've been thrown out of, been called out of order many times.
Okay. I'd like to thank everyone, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Chairman?
Right, but we can, we can, if we close it, we can deliberate and then continue on deliberation to continue to review documentation, correct?
That's correct, no new testimony from the Fire Marshal, though.
Ms. Young, is that important to you?
Well, I thought I heard earlier acquiescence on behalf of the applicant for receipt of those comments, even if the application, the hearing was closed tonight, I'm under the understanding that the ZBA members can receive documentation from their staff post hearing, especially when an applicant is acquiesced to that, but if Attorney Florick tells us differently, I will yield to Attorney Florick.
I think the safer thing to do would be if the board wanted more information and data to keep the public hearing open, to accept that. Though, you're right, Ms. Young, that the board can accept expert testimony from its staff, Jay, me, perhaps the Fire Marshal, I don't know off the top of my head, but the safer thing to do would be to keep the public hearing open, also because other interested parties might like an opportunity to speak to that information from the Fire Marshal, and if the public hearing's closed, obviously, they can't do that.
Well, I'll entertain a motion, then.
I'll make a motion to leave the hearing open, I think the applicant, is it keep, put it on the table, take it off the table, I'm trying to leave it open, I'm not sure the terminology, Stratford.
Continue, motion to continue.
Continue, motion to continue, I think the applicant should respond, rebut, if you will, the arguments made by the adjacent property owners about the self-created hardship, I think we need to hear from the Fire Marshal, so it's clear as to have they reviewed the plans, and what is their response to them, do they have any safety concerns associated with the very long access way that doesn't meet their access way with requirements, among other things? And we heard the neighbors want the opportunity to review some of the materials, of which I don't even have all of them, because there wasn't enough of them to supply to all of us.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue by Ms. Young, we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Streets, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Till the next public hearing, which would be October 10?
10.
October 10. Okay, let's do that motion again, it wasn't exactly clear. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Hoydic, seconded by Mr. Dempsey. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. I'd like to take about a 10-minute recess, if we may, before we go to administrative session.